Anne Perry here. It is 3:05, right?
Yeah, approximately.
About 3:05.
Yeah, let's see.
3:05. We're in room 1050, and I believe we have a two-item agenda.
Yes, you do.
All right.
Item number one relates to CAO report relative to proposed second modification of the wastewater collection system settlement agreement. We have staff in the Bureau of Sanitation present this item.
Before staff comes up, let's get Dr. Williams to come up and do his thing. Dr. Williams, come on up. Item number one.
I haven't heard all the report yet.
Well, you already have. I'm sure you've already formulated an opinion.[222.60][222.60](Laughter) Right?
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno, Northeast LA. Why am I here? Well, I smelt something was coming. So, two things with sewers and storm drains is, one, you might smell them; two, they cost a lot of money.
Mm-hmm.
Now, the question would be, in the same way that there's consideration of an inspector general for the DWP, which is off the general fund, is there also consideration for an inspector general for the Department of Public Works, specifically storm drains, sewers? Because, oh, have we had a rate increase recently? No. Does that mean that the previous rate increases were adequate to cover all of the expenses, although they were increasing? So, I would have expected an annual increase in the rates, although my rate for sewage is larger than my rate for water cost on my bill. So, I'm always interested in following the money and following the capital works, and then the operations and maintenance. Got 6,500 miles of sewers. How many are being replaced on an annual basis? Is it like DWP, that is, .3 percent? Or is it maybe 1 percent? I don't know. Would be interesting to have, I say, an inspector general or a sewer sheriff, as the finance department likes to call them. Sheriffs. I don't know quite what that means, but anyway. So, I would highly recommend that you consider as part of this whether there's an inspector general. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Staff, come on up.
Sabilio Rodriguez, CAO's office. I'll just give a quick overview. City has been working toward compliance with the Collection System Settlement Agreement since 2004 with the objective of reducing sewer spill risk and related overflow events. Scope of activities to achieve this includes various sewer construction, rehab projects, sewer cleaning and inspection, root control and odor control remedies or mechanisms such as air treatment facilities. The Bureau with appropriate stakeholders is conducting an air treatment facility evaluation study to examine the effectiveness of such facilities and other options if needed for the wastewater collection system. Second modification before you alter several deadlines in the air treatment facility evaluation study to allow adequate time for testing, data monitoring, compilation in the context of review and input to be obtained from odor control expert, which was also required under the first modification, and to hold the pertinent committee meetings and workshops. Second modification also requires additional interim status reports by the city and revision to the annual due date for the odor master plan updates. Additionally, the modification provides for nine-month extension on completion of the Washington Oxford Beach relief sewer project.
Will that be finished by March 2011?
I have here March 1st of '11, 2011.
Yes, okay. So, the answer is yes on that. Okay.
Yeah. Funding for current year expenditures is included in the 10-11 budget and wastewater capital expenditure plan. In closing, I just want to note that the city, through the Collection System Settlement Agreement efforts and the wastewater capital program to date, has achieved a significant reduction in sewer system overflows by 80 percent.
What timeframe?
That was since 2004, and the agreement is through 2014.
That's six years.
Six years.
Okay. All right. Mr. Hadi Galal, did you want to add anything?
Yeah. Del, Hadi, Bureau of Sanitation, I want to thank you for your support. And we are, we have invested a lot in the wastewater system over the last 10 years. We are renewing about 1 percent a year in the sewer system. Our sewer spills are about 80 percent below what they were in 2000, which has really improved the quality of life in the neighborhoods and the water quality. Our sewer odors have been reduced by close to 60 percent. We continue to work with the community on addressing this. And the good news is out of this air treatment facility study that we worked with your office on reviewing its need, it looks like the recommendation will recommend that four out of the five air treatment facilities will not be needed, including the 1023rd and San Pedro. That will be a savings of over $80 million for the city that we can actually invest in other parts of the system to ensure that we continue reduction in spills. That will become a fourth-year committee and the council for your action at some point, including what we will do with the properties that we will have available after this decision is made.
Okay, the specific areas of the city that contain air treatment facilities, where are, what are those locations?
The two that have, we have two that basically are under construction, should be complete this month. One is at La Cienega and Jefferson, close to the parking lot that's being built for the rail, Metro Rail Expo, and 106,000 Jefferson, close to Rodeo and Jefferson. That would eliminate the temporary scrubber that we have in the island at Rodeo and Jefferson that would be removed, and the island will be restored back and put back into service as intended.
All right. Any additional requirements under the Collection System Settlement Agreement? Would any of those result in future rate increases?
The first five years of the settlement agreement required a rate increase that we came to the council for approval, which was approved at the time. We are reviewing the needs for next future five years. We have gone now two years without a rate increase, and we are continuing to review our needs, our priorities. The focus is on the capital program, ensuring that the capital needs are done. So, we're reviewing it, looking at the priority, and hopefully we'll be working with your offices on any future needs. I will come forward before you.
Okay. Any other questions? I guess not. All right, fine. Just go forward. It's a recommendation.
Recommendation from the chair?
Yes.
Communication from the chair.
Approve, CEO.
Yes.
Thanks. Move on to item two.
Item two. City Attorney Report in Orange relative to reducing us all waste fee lifeline subsidy.
No cards on that, right?
No, no.
Just one public. Come on. Yeah, come on.
City Attorney and Bureau of Sanitation.
No, there are no cards on that. Just on public comment. Okay.
Good afternoon, Deputy City Attorney Judith Reel. We have transmitted a draft of an ordinance reducing the solid waste fee lifeline subsidy, placing limits on the number of subsidy recipients, and establishing a two-year renewal period in which to certify eligibility.
Okay. Who wants to?
You want to talk about the ordinance?
What I want to know, so you can focus your comments, the fiscal impact of adopting this ordinance to the city. Obviously, it's going to save money. I'd like to know how much, and where the savings will go, whether they will go to a special fund or the general fund. I want you to tell me how many customers in the lifeline program there are at present, and if you have not done outreach already, what you intend to do so that people can be educated on how the reduction in the lifeline subsidy will affect them. And then finally, the prepared ordinance recommends phasing the reduction in over time. So, if you could explain the phased-in approach and how you're going to implement that.
Councilmember, thank you. I can't speak to the majority of your questions. Those are, I believe, appropriately directed to the Bureau. The phase-in was at the direction of council, and so it would establish initially a 35, a reduction of 65 percent rather than an exemption. And then, effective July 1, 2011, it would be a 35 percent reduction. And again, that was at council's request.
All right. So, you guys want to pick?
Sure. Good afternoon. Alex Halu for the Bureau of Sanitation. The council basically directed us to look at the lifeline program. Currently, people who are in the program are exempted from the trash fee, and that could be about $36, $32, $36.32 a month for single-family residents. Currently, in the program, when this was passed by council, were 59,011 people who were basically in the program. The council looked at it in two ways. One of them is to limit the amount that's being expended, as well as to limit about 16.7 million. If the program continued, the general fund is the one, has to pay the money into the program. So, we followed the council instruction, and we mailed letters to 59,011 from those we had about return for recertification to continue on the program. 24,587 and 34,424, which is about 58 percent, did not return. So, what we did was, we are sending a second letter, also working with the council office, we started with CD-15 and now working with CD-7, to send the list of the residents who did not reply back to the program. So, we have the list of the name, the address, and the zip code. So, we're working with CD-
An initial mailing, and then some people responded, others didn't. So, now you're doing a second mailing to those who did not respond?
That's correct. And as, also to go, also a little bit more further, we are working with the council office by giving them the address and the location of the residents who qualify for the lifeline based on being in the program. So, this way they can work with us and to inform them about this program and that they qualify to receive the benefits of the program. Also, we have worked with 311. We placed on the city website. We have worked with the Neighborhood Council, Department of Aging, and other city departments. Again, we will be, if, after the second letter is sent out, we have given them until December 2010 to respond. If they fail to respond by December, and we cannot reach them in other ways, we will send them a final letter saying that you are no longer qualified for the reduction. And since you don't qualify for reduction, however, we will include an application for them to resubmit to the Office of Finance.
Okay, now, let me ask you a question. And I don't mean to be picky, but I, and it's good you've got, you've got a sample here in Spanish, but the form itself, do you have the forms in multiple languages too? The recertification form?
This is actually the form that was approved by the council in, we just used that form itself.
You don't have it in other languages?
No, we did not.
Do you think you can go, put it on, upload the form online, and then can it be, I guess what I'm trying to-
It's already online, council member.
No, no, no. I'm just trying to understand, if somebody speaks another language and they're monolingual, and they get the letter, they'll obviously want to respond. What if they can read the letter, but they can't read the form? Are you just assuming that somebody's going to be able to find someone to do the form for them?
No. Well, they, we have been getting calls into our hotline. We have about 11 employees who are answering phone calls and helping them fill the application.
Home language.
Exact, we do have people who bilingual, and actually, we also, other languages too beside English and Spanish.
Uh-huh.
We've been helping people fill out their applications.
So, are you getting calls in other languages other than Spanish and?
We got, actually, in Russian, and we got some in Arabic and some other languages, and Chinese and so forth. So, we-
Do you have somebody to handle that on the phone?
Absolutely.
Okay. Because I do see that it says that in the letter.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
And I'll let Neil talk about the financial impact to the city and the general fund.
Okay. Please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Neil Gallo, Bureau of Sanitation. So, the annual appropriation of the budget for the lifeline program is the generalcy purposes, non-departmental, and it's $16.7 million. The cost of the program with the total number of lifeline participants, if there were to be no charge, the estimated cost based on ourselves and the CAO's office was anywhere from $21 to $23 million a year. So, the budget right now is for 16.7, and the annual cost with no charge, no fee in place, would be $21 to $23 million. There was also, by council action instructed us in the Office of Finance to implement a cap on the number of our participants in the program as well. So, that's kind of the neighborhood in terms of the amount of funds that could be allocated per year towards the cost. The, just looking at the data we've received so far in terms of number of respondents, as well as the implementation of a 35 percent charge, the estimates we have now would be anywhere from 16 to 17, or 17 and a half million dollars be required this fiscal year with the assumption that a fee would be in place by mid-December. So, if a fee is in place by mid-December, then the estimated cost of general fund would be 16 to 17 and a half million, and the appropriation is right now is 16.7.
Okay, and the savings you contemplate going to?
Well, the following fiscal year, the fee would go from a 35 percent to a 70 percent, and then the cost of the general fund would go down. Now, of course, that's all dependent upon a number of factors, which includes the total number of participants in the program as well.
Okay. You know what? One thing I want to just ask you one more time. I thank you on the outreach response. That's, I'm glad you cleared some of those things up. But do you have a total number of the universe of people who are in lifeline?
Yes.
Yes.
Currently, there's about 60,000 people that are registered, but based on our data, there are some who have deceased. We have not subtracted those from them. There's about 161, and so those will be taken out from program.
161,000?
No, no, 161 people.
Oh, that's it.
161 out of the, because what happened is that when we sent out the letters, we had some returned for undeliverable because of address or because the person had passed away.
Okay.
And we go and, really, our staff have been doing a great job, going the extra mile, even when those who have seen undeliverable, we checked in our computer as well as DWP's computer to find out the reason why it's undeliverable. And some of them, we see people living there, so we're sending a second notice to them. But we have about 161 that is undeliverable, 968.
They might not, somebody else moved in, they may not want one.
Yeah, and sometimes-
They may not qualify.
Right. Exactly. There's 968 right now in the summary that we provided, who have returned mail.
So, you're purging your database and then giving those who haven't responded a second and then a final chance to respond. That should help you clean up your own data, right?
Absolutely. Our data, DWP, as well as Office of Finance.
Okay, and then all of that, the initial letter, then no response, a second letter, not response, then the final notice, is that what you consider to be your phased-in approach?
That one and the phone calls that we're making. Yes.
The phone calls in addition to the letters?
That's correct.
And how many phone calls could people expect?
We have made so far 7,638 phone calls, and it depends on the second out of the 34,000 we're making. We will probably make in about, it depends on the return.
Okay.
But so far, we made 7,638 phone calls.
So, you subtract that from the 600,000 figure, minus the 161 who may be deceased, and you've got a long way to go.
Yeah. Well, it depends, really, on the 34,000, how many of those return, because it could be, we could be in the 30s or the 40,000 range total participant in the program.
Okay. Mr. Cardenas is here for the record, and we are on two, I think you know that already. And if you have any questions, that would be your opportunity to ask.
So, thank you, Madam Chair. Sending a letter with applications, mailing out 59,000 of them, which is 100 percent of our understood target, correct? The second thing that's been done, total recertification applications received, 24,587, and of those, various activity going on with them, I guess to verify whether or not they do qualify?
What happened, Councilman, is that the follow-up letters in the, what happened is, when we sent the 59,000, 24,000 came. Some of them were missing information. So, if they're only missing one item, we decided to give them a phone call and tell them, you're only missing one item, please mail it to us so we can close it and get you certified. If they're missing several items in their application, then we send them a, actually, I have a document attached in the package, list up the items that they're missing, for example, driver license, income. So, this way it could help them.
Now, my main point to clarify for the record, all the various activities that are going on, to try to make sure that we have an accurate application and an accurate number of individuals who should be afforded this opportunity, who are giving, who are being given this opportunity. And that is, what is, is there a standard in the industry, and if there is a rule of thumb in the industry instead of a standard, can we be rest assured that we're going above and beyond the call of duty to make sure that we are doing a lot, I don't want to say everything, because you could send out 100 times over, and that's still not everything. But are we doing a lot to make sure that we're being fair and responsible and allowing people the opportunity to, if they're qualified, to please apply for this opportunity?
What we are doing right now is we, from the residents who did not respond, it, Councilmember, we have worked with CD-15 and working with CD-7. We're giving them the address and the location and the zip code of the residents who currently in the program, and if they do not recertify, they would lose it. We're generating the list for all other council offices, and we'll be providing that opportunity for all council offices to do an outreach and help us also reach out to the residents. We're working with Department of Aging. We're reaching out to disability, Department of Disability, and other departments, as well 311 and everybody else, to help us reach out for the 59,011 who are currently in the program.
Okay.
As for the number of the 30 percent, for example, that we're going to be in 2011, right, initially, the city was very generous because we covered the entire cost, which is, you know, 100 percent. That's going to be phased in. Upon adoption of the ordinance, we will be going down to about 65 percent coverage by the city, and after that, the city will be covering 30 percent with the residents taking the chunk, the remaining 70 percent. That is in line with some of the other generous cities around us. Some cities give you no discount, some cities give you, and so we will be among the ones who are really generous in giving about 30 percent.
Okay.
Councilmember, if I might, just also in terms of the certification process, if people fail to submit the documentation, and so they lose their eligibility, we've made sure in the ordinance that it does not compromise their right to submit an application. So, if they fail to respond, and then they get a bill that doesn't have the subsidy on it, they'll have an application form, and they, then they can fill it out and they can recertify.
And then my last question is, when they do, in fact, successfully fill out the information, nothing missing, and they do, in fact, qualify, what is the lag time between they can see the difference in their bill?
Upon adoption of the ordinance? The Bureau will be working with DWP on putting the new charge on the bill. So, that would be, there would be, I don't know, just operation time.
And the DWP bill is sent out every other month. So, basically, the lag time is somewhere within a 60-day period?
Probably for some of them, yes.
Yes.
Councilmember, so for the bills for the water power, they do go out every other month, but there are bills going out throughout the month. We were thinking that with the adoption of the ordinance, the posting 30 days for the ordinance, that the soonest that bills might be seen would be mid to late December.
Okay. All right. So, my main point in asking that question is, obviously, if somebody does qualify, they're a low-income household, and that being the case, to a low-income household waiting three, four, five, six months in order to see the bill get back into proper order is a lot to those individuals. So, I just wanted to make sure that we are comfortable and confident that we're moving with the kind of speed that within a natural billing cycle, we should be able to have the correct amount. Okay? All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, no other questions. So, then the issue at hand is the recommendation to adopt a proposed ordinance that would phase in a reduction of solid waste fee lifeline subsidy. All right?
Move to adopt the ordinance for the city attorney.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we have one card from Dr. Williams for public comment. This is a portion of the agenda for items that are not agendized. So, Dr. Williams, come on up. Take it away. I said, take it away.
By the way, our LA 32 Neighborhood Council never received any information.
Can you speak up? I can't hear you.
A little closer to the mic. For some reason, it's-
Pull the mic closer.
Hello?
Hello?
There you go.
Hello?
Tip, just tip it up a little bit.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay. Our LA 32 Neighborhood Council never received anything about lifeline. So, and-
Huh. Okay.
Just reality check, but anyway.
Okay. Is there-
Fees-
Give him your card so he can talk to you.
I gave him my address.
Okay. Maybe you could do a mail blast?
Okay. Fees and taxes. Fees have become an interesting subject these days, even in the statewide election of when are fees taxes, when are taxes fees?
Ask a lawyer.
Hmm?
Ask a lawyer.
(Laughter) Ask the judge. Okay. That will be decided. However, people still have to pay fees, and in point of fact, my solid waste fee is larger than my electric bill. So, we're, yeah, I don't consume very much electricity. So, we're quite concerned regarding how can you explain to people how the rates are determined for the fees and when the fees are going to be increased, how those rates were determined. There's a lot of ambiguity. People send out a lot of mailers, and nothing goes through, or the fire department sends out their mailers regarding brush clearance, and they get paid $13 just for sending out a letter. That's pretty good, without an invoice and no means of tracking it. So, there seems to be a real failure to communicate, especially when you consider that in LA 32 Neighborhood Council, our average high school student is only 50 percent of those that started, and those that finish have less than 50 percent success on English and math. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Nobody else is coming forward, so we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.